...in there in his testimony, if you'd like to see that, that does have at least an idea as to what the vegetation and fire retention basin would be. We could do that, we could wait until he's... I don't want to muddy the waters too much.
Yeah.
I do want to get through the project overview.
Maybe we just let this go through and then I just may want to circle back to that. Obviously, you can see where what my questions are around.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we certainly don't want to hold up the board. You obviously know a lot about the project, so I don't want to, you know, waste your time talking about where the property is located and, you know, specifics, but I can, you know, I certainly would normally like to put that on the record so you could see exactly what we're proposing and, you know.
Okay.
If you want to continue describing the project for the board.
So, in regards to the bio-retention basin that's being proposed, stormwater runoff from all of the paved areas, the loading area, the driveway, the parking spaces, runoff from the roof area are all going to be connected and discharged into the basin. Once the water enters the basin, the basin has been designed to provide both water quality and groundwater recharge requirements as required by the major development, major stormwater management ordinance. Within that bio-retention area, a maximum of 12 inches of stormwater flows into that area. Any stormwater above 12 inches will start to be discharged through the outlet structure that a typical detention basin would have, but that first 12 inches of water actually will infiltrate back into the ground. And that infiltration allows the applicant to maintain the existing site groundwater recharge. Whatever recharge volume the project currently or the native site as it exists right now puts back into the aquifer. Post-development, the same amount of water will go back into the aquifer. So this project does not create a deficit in terms of groundwater recharge. And the primary purpose of the bio-retention system is also, not only does it provide groundwater recharge, but it also filters stormwater. The water quality storm in New Jersey is an inch and a quarter runoff within two hours. The volume of runoff from that storm event flows into the bio-retention basin and that fully infiltrates back into the ground. So any sort of pollutants that would normally be a part of stormwater runoff, sedimentation on parking lots, you normally get oils, things that spills onto the pavement. Instead of that being directly discharged into the open water system of the state, it gets filtered through that bio-retention mix. A lot of the pollutants remain in the basin. It's picked up by the plants through the root system, and that's essentially how that bio-retention system functions. And that's the intent of that system, is essentially to filter stormwater before it's discharged through the system and discharged off-site. And the applicant's design meets the requirement for 80% total suspended solids. Again, we're meeting the requirement for groundwater recharge utilizing the system. In addition to those two criteria, the applicant must also provide stormwater control for rate reduction. And this basin has been designed to provide 50% reduction in, as compared to the pre-developed conditions for the two-year storm, 25% reduction for the 10-year storm and 20% for the 100-year storm. And those are the requirements under the ordinance for a major stormwater project. However, this particular project, given the large amount of the off-site drainage that flows into the property and through the property, there is a requirement that NJDEP has that green infrastructures, which this is technically a green infrastructure, the maximum drainage area has to be less than two and a half acres. Given the nature of this property and how the existing area drains, it's impossible to be able to limit that drainage area to two and a half acre. The off-site area coming through this property exceeds two and a half acres, and that doesn't count anything that the applicant is, will be putting into that basin. So that is a relief that the applicant will need. And the applicant will apply to NJDEP requesting a waiver relief from the green infrastructure instead of a small-scale bio-retention system. This basin functions as a bio-retention basin, but it's just not technically a small-scale bio-retention system.
So this was part and parcel of the review letter that Mr. O'Brien did in connection with the application. He has a number of items, some of which you've already addressed and some of which we have commented on in our response letter, but we will get whatever approvals are required from the DEP as a condition of any approval at this board may grant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Again, just quickly, for the 100-year storm, the drainage, the runoff goes into the 202 stormwater drainage system?
So, right now, everything goes into the DOT system, into Route 202. But to answer your question regarding the 100-year storm, it basically flows into the basin. The basin will reduce the rate at which that 100-year storm flows into the DOT system. So there's a net reduction in that peak rate of runoff. The drainage report that we submitted as part of the application, for the 100-year storm, under the existing conditions, it's just from the developer that the applicant is proposing, it's 13.3 CFS. Once the site is developed...
CFS.
Correct. Cubic feet per second. It's, once the site is developed, that's going to be reduced by 20%. So just from the onsite area, the applicant, under the 100-year storm, will discharge 10.6 CFS. So the project actually results in a reduction in the peak rate of runoff from the property. And that's one of the requirements that we have for major stormwater projects, is that we have to look at the two-year storm, the 10-year storm, and the 100-year storms, and we have to reduce all of those.
I have a question regarding the water quality.
Yes.
Because beside the reduction, right, there's also water quality. So the building, the zip track, right, this is, would be draining and entering bio-retention as a clean water, right?
Correct.
Of the pavement, we consider it's not clean, right? So the bio-retention will handle both? How do you approach the water quality? I'm just curious.
Understood. And thank you for the question. So essentially, all of the water when it comes into the basin, both the roof water, as you indicated, is considered clean and we're allowed to discharge out without any treatment. However, it's really not practical to start to separate out the discharges. It typically doesn't work in a situation like this. So runoff from the roof and runoff from the parking area, from any of the asphalt surfaces, once it drains into the basin, it will be mixed. And the way the analysis works is that we're looking at the impervious surfaces and the runoff that's generated for that under the water quality storm event. And that volume of runoff has to be fully contained and treated. So we're not looking at the parking area individually, we're actually looking at the overall impervious surface. So we're treating that entire volume. You're welcome.
Got a question too?
Yes.
First, we do go through long periods of drought around here. So what kind of material is on the top there? Because I know, like in my property, if it gets really dry, it doesn't absorb water very quickly. And Grant, you may say two-year, five-year, 100-year storms, that is really variable anymore these days. So is it going to be able to go through long periods of drought and then a heavy storm come by and be able to absorb a lot of that quickly? Or is it material pretty much topsoil like it's around here?
Well, so that's the native material in the area that's going to be, let's call it lawn, outside of the pavement and outside of the bio-retention area. The actual bio-retention area, which is, it doesn't show on this, but within the plants that there's a hatchet within the basin, and that would be the area that's considered bio-retention. And the soil within that area, it's not the native soil. That area consists of basically a manufactured planting mix, that's majority of which is sand. It's typically somewhere around 85% that's sand, and then the remainder is organic matter. Could be compost, it could be a combination of compost and topsoil or other type of organic matter. Essentially, that bio-retention mix, because of the high sand content, ends up being very permeable. You don't really have, the state limits the amount of silt and clays you can have within that bio-retention mix, and the intent really is so that it maintains some ability to trap moisture so it doesn't dry out, but it also allows with that mixture, with the organics, that the vegetation would grow. And you retain enough moisture so that you don't have that situation. If you think about pure sand, even though it would work great and it probably would never have an issue clogging during extended periods, but it doesn't retain any moisture and it doesn't have any organics to support vegetative growth. So that's why the state does have specific requirements in terms of what that mixture needs to be. And one of the applicant's burden will be that when that material is placed, prior to it being placed, we've got one of two options. That is, he could purchase the mix from a certified supplier and they will ensure that it meets the DEP criteria. That will have to be provided to the town. The second alternative is that the applicant can mix it onsite. And I've done it both ways, where developers have purchased the material, and I've also done it where we have mixed it onsite. And when we've done it onsite, it has to be witnessed by myself or someone from my office that we ensured that the right ratio of sand and organic matter is put in place prior to it being placed into the system. And that's actually a requirement from NJDEP, that if we're going to mix it onsite, it has to be done under the engineer's supervision.
Are we on to general questions?
At this point, you know, if you have a question that's really relevant to where we are, I want to keep the conversation unless you, unless, you know.
Let's continue with the stormwater and the bio-retention, then we can go back. We'll hit the building and we'll hit some of the other improvements.
So essentially, that's the stormwater aspect of the project and the way it's been In terms of access and circulation into the building...
Let's talk about the building first. What size building are we proposing?
So this is a one-story building. It's 35 feet high to the peak, but it's actually a one-story building.
And the height is required based upon the applicant's need to store all the equipment inside?
Correct.
For sale, vehicles.
Correct.
So that means the vehicles are that tall, some of them?
Some of them could be, and it's just the way the building has been laid out.
Okay.
Okay. And the other onsite improvements, we mentioned parking spaces, what's some of the other impervious areas used for?
So the other impervious area is the loading area, and part of the applicant's need is to provide for safe ingress and egress of tractor-trailers into the property. What we've done with this particular design is that the loading dock that's been proposed as part of this property is going to be located to the north. The loading dock is actually located at the back part of the building, in that northerly section. And the way the loading area functions, the entrance onto Route 202 has been designed for a tractor-trailer to be able to turn into the property. They'll pull north into that K-turn area and then back up into the loading zone. Once they're in the loading zone to exit the property, they can pull forward and then make a left, head south, and then exit back onto Route 202. So the sizing of all of the curb returns and also how the loading area has been configured is based on Ashtow template for a wheelbase 65 tractor-trailer.
And based upon your review, that could accommodate the 65-foot tractor-trailer onsite without issue?
Correct. It's been designed so that the truck can enter the property, back up into the loading zone, and exit the property without any conflicts.
Okay. To the north of the loading zone, that light green area, what is that for?
So that light green area is the outdoor storage area?
And that was what the applicant testified to, would be grass?
Correct.
Okay. And that's not, why was it not proposed to be either grass pavers or gravel?
So initially, we thought that grass would be, just for the normal storage of the equipment outside, that that would be acceptable. But as we got into the project, using forklifts, as most of us have seen, they have fairly small wheels and they do apply a fairly large ground pressure. And grass, we don't believe is going to be very functional over an extended period of time. So one request that the applicant had made is if we could look at perhaps using grass pavers at the back there. Grass pavers, they do have structural grass pavers that are made out of concrete with large openings in between, not the typical pavers you would use in a patio, but they're essentially pavers that can support the weight of a forklift while maintaining adequate pervious areas in between to allow water to basically flow across that area and some back into the ground. We've looked at those as options perhaps to stabilize that area so we don't have any long-term maintenance issues in the back of the building.
So if the board felt that was necessary, that's something that we could put in that area?
Yes.
Would it be possible to do that without the need for any impervious coverage variance?
So right now, with the use of grass pavers, I do believe that we're going to be right under the 25% coverage just permitted under the ordinance. That area is slightly over 4,000 square feet, but again, the grass pavers are not 100% pervious, depending upon which one is selected, that you have some pavers that are probably about 40 or 50% pervious relative to the actual concrete area that they would occupy.
So if the board would prefer grass pavers in that area, we could stipulate that we would not exceed the 25% either through the use of the square footage area that would be grass pavers or the size of the pavers themselves, what portion was grass and what portion was actually pervious?
Correct.
Okay. Any other onsite development you want to explain to the board?
Talk about... Karen, we need to take like a 10-minute break. Is now a good time? I don't want to, I want to...
Yeah, that's fine. Do I need a motion for this?
Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute break. It is 8:35. We'll be back at 8:45. Thank you.
Actually, one thing, get her some water. We'll start afterwards, that would be wonderful, thank you. Are we ready to go? Okay, we are back. Any board is re- what is the word?
Presumed.
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 Ooh, gavel.
So, we adjourned just for one re- we had a small item we wanted to discuss. One of the, one of our members, turns out, used a firm that Mr. Recarion worked for. Do I have this right, in the past?
No, I believe that, I'm a owner.
No, no. Do you want to explain?
Yeah, I want to speak.
I just want to confess that I know more about bio-retention basins than I ever wanted to learn. They do function as design. We worked together, it was more than two years ago.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. We've asked, there doesn't seem to be any problems.
I don't think there's a conflict. I'm gonna, you know, reserve the right to just check on this a little further for the next meeting. But I don't think there is one, would be if there was a direct, you know, relationship with the applicant, which, that's not the situation, it's the professional. So, again, you know.
It's not gonna, will it affect your judgment in any way?
Well, that's, that's not even a question. We have to look at the engineer ethics too, like, do you, you know, have an issue? What, and is it, I know, an attorney probably would, you know.
I think it was through the architectural firm.
Through Borne and Borne, right?
I was engaged.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, do you have any concerns?
I don't have any concerns.
Do you have any concerns? My, my suggestion would be to continue. If you find a black and white rule that we have to deal with later, we'll deal with it. But I, I don't feel like it's a close relationship, I feel like it's been a couple of years. Did you, you didn't know outside of that relationship?
No, that's how we met.
Okay. Any one else, are we good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pick up where you left off.
Yes, okay, so I, I think we're just gonna continue with the engineering testimony. I'd like to touch on some, the grading, there's a retaining wall aspect of this, and also some landscaping. And then I'd like to go through the technical review letter. Alright, so grading, how are we grading this site?
Okay, oh, sorry to interrupt once again. All right, now we're looking at Exhibit A4, and that's a sheet probably from your plan?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Wha- which one is it?
Sheet number 12.
Are we gonna label that as A4?
Uh-huh.
So it's A4, sheet 12 of the site plan.
So, this is the landscaping plan that was submitted as a part of the set that the board has. Again, it's an exact copy of what the board has in its file. And what this plan shows is the proposed site grading and the landscaping that the applicant is proposing. Along the front of the property where we have the bio-retention basin, that basin is going to be landscaped with a combination of different types of shrubs, from dogwoods through evergreen shrubs. We do have deciduous trees consisting of red maple and silver maple. Those are some of the plantings that the applicant is proposing along the front of the property. In addition to the basin planting, what we've also done is that there's going to be a, almost a continuous hedge along the base of the parking area, along that southerly side. And that hedge is proposed to be viburnum, essentially an evergreen type hedge. That's going to be a relatively low-growing hedge, it's going to be maintained by the applicant in the neighborhood of about perhaps three to four feet. And that does, again, it's gonna provide some screening of any cars that are parked in that area. But it's low enough that any of the equipment, the normal tractors and so forth that would be displayed, can also still remain visible. And the intention really is to minimize the effect of this property on the highway. And again, to minimize visibility, at least of the parked cars. But again, the tractors and the equipment are generally much taller than the cars. So we don't believe that there's going to be any issues in terms of visibility for the applicant's purpose. In addition to that, along the back part of the property, that outdoor storage area, the original design called for a significant amount of slope on that outdoor storage area, of approximately 10%. And the reason why we had proposed that originally is because there's quite a bit of slope on this property from the north to the south. And to minimize the earthwork, we were trying to maximize the slope. However, in conversations with the applicant, what we would like to do is to reduce the slope in that area in the neighborhood of perhaps 2% to 3%. And in order to do that, what the applicant is going to have to do is to install a retaining wall along the back of the property. And what we contemplated doing is to install the retaining wall where the fence enclosure would be. And the existing grade at the top of the wall will remain as the grades that are currently proposed. However, the actual surface that the equipment will be parked on will be lowered. What we anticipate with the retaining wall is that at the highest point, it could be anywhere from about six, around six feet at the highest point, which would be towards the middle of the building, that northerly most part of the property, behind the building. And again, the retaining wall is not going to be visible from any of the adjoining property owners. The actual ground where the outdoor storage is going to be will be lower. So any visibility of any equipment that may be at the back there is going to be completely screened by the retaining wall. And again, the natural vegetation or the wooded area along the back of the property will also screen that area. Utilizing a retaining wall in that area to lower the grade or to flatten out the grades in that area makes that part of the project and that storage area more functional for the, for the applicant.
Any grading questions before we move on?
Stormwater, is it gonna run, what are you gonna do with the stormwater in that area?
So, right now within that area, there is an inlet that was proposed. That inlet will remain within that area. So the current flow of stormwater through the property into that area will be maintained.
And that'll be treated with the bio-retention as?
Yes, it'll all be connected into the bio-retention basin. It's connected right now, and that connection will be maintained.
Okay.
Does it flow through the, do you have to, does it flow just around the retaining wall? Does it flow through typically, how?
No, so, right, right now, all of the off-site runoff from the wooded area in the neighboring property was flowing down into that area. And there is an inlet that's proposed within that area that collects stormwater that's flowing in that general vicinity. That inlet is connected to the basin. That connection is still going to be maintained. The only difference is, stormwater.
You'll have weep holes in the, in the retaining wall, right?
Yeah, so the retaining wall to relieve basically water pressure or poor pressure behind the wall, there's weep holes to remove groundwater. But any excess stormwater is gonna flow across the top of the wall into that area, where it gets collected by the drainage system and then discharged into the basin.
Can I ask a couple of questions, clarification? So, as it relates to the retaining wall, I think there was a chain link fence, six foot, that was originally proposed. What, will that one need?
The plan right now, I believe. Correct.
So, the six-foot chain link fence will sit at ground level about six feet higher than the equipment? Is that, am I picturing that correctly?
So, we are gonna need some safety protection on top of the wall, just given the height of the wall. So the fence is going to serve that purpose also.
Does it need to be six foot?
It doesn't have to be six foot.
So, so there'll be a new detail to that?
Correct.
You mentioned landscaping in the front, plantings, there's something to clarify. You had said silver maple, not sugar maple, correct?
Thank you.
And then, you also mentioned that you have plantings along the driveway on the top side of the basin towards the building. And that if, they wouldn't be more than three feet in height maintained in order to see the tractors and that type of thing. So are you proposing that the display area be right behind the curbs?
So, what we've looked at, so the parking spaces that are proposed are 20 feet, nine feet by 20 feet, which is what's required by the ordinance. Typical parking spaces are usually nine by 18. The driveway aisle itself is 28 feet wide. Under normal circumstances for 90-degree parking, even if we're using nine by 18 parking spaces, the driveway is typically anywhere from 24 to 25 feet. I've seen ordinances where you're allowed to reduce the driveway down to 22 feet wide. Given the larger parking spaces and the wider driveway width, we do believe that we have adequate area along that northerly part of the property against the curb where the driveway is, that if some of the equipment is displayed in that area, that it'll be outside of any potential customer using, usable parking spaces. The applicant can certainly have the employees park within that easterly section of the parking lot adjacent to the building, where, once they're parked, they're typically not gonna be moving in and out. The rest of the parking space is towards the west of the parking lot, that can be utilized by customer. They're still going to be fairly close to the entrance. And if we were to park any of the display equipment within the paved area in that general area, we don't believe that there's going to be any impact to the access of those parking spaces. Number one, because it's going to be used by employees. And then number two, we do have the larger parking spaces and the wider aisle. And the equipments are generally about five or six feet wide. They're not excessively large tractors that they were, they're planning on displaying. So if they're, if that area of the parking lot is utilized for any type of display, we don't believe it's going to have any impact on the usability of that parking, of those parking spaces for the employees.
And, and so you, would you designate that as a display area on the, on the plans? As far as where, where employee parking would most likely occur? That way you would, because if you're parking five or six foot, or displaying five or six foot tractors, that doesn't give you enough circulation, right? As far as drive up or out with.
Correct, and we can certainly, as part of any of the board approves the application, any resolution compliance, we can certainly document where the employee parking is going to be. And then also highlight the area that we are anticipating to be used for display.
And then customer parking as well.
And then customer parking. There, there is a space on the eastern side of the last parking spot that seems like it's blank or open. What, what is that area for?
So, initially, in one of the rendition, we did have access to the building in that area. But that area towards the, towards the east, that area can be used in the event that all of the parking spaces were occupied. That area could be used as a turnaround. Typically with that end parking, I like to provide a means for anyone that pulls into that area if they can't find a park, that they have the ability to turn around and then exit the property. So that's really was the intention of that area, is to leave it available so if all of the parking spaces were occupied, that it can be utilized to turn around and then drive back out of the property.
So that's not really meant for display, or it wouldn't be used as a display area?
No, we could, the current plan is that we could utilize some portion of that for display.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. With selling equipment like this, I can imagine that some people will come in with trucks and trailers, you know, small trailers behind them. How will that be accommodated?
So, we haven't made any specific provisions for trailers to be parked, or trucks with trailers to be parked on the property. But in the event that someone does come to the property, let's say to pick up a piece of equipment that they have purchased, the way the actual westerly side of the building has been designed, that covered canopy area, which is the X on the plan, it's about 25 feet wide. And the entire parking or the entire paved area from the building to that westerly curb line, it's about 40 feet in total width. So anyone, let's say for instance, if they come to pick up a piece of, piece of equipment, once it's loaded onto the trailer, they could pull forward into that K-turn area and then back up into the loading zone and then exit the property. Those types of pickup truck trailers, they're much smaller than a tractor trailer. So we don't believe that there's going to be any issues there in terms of someone being able to use that area with a trailer to be able to turn around on site and then exit the property.
And it, I'm sorry. Again, with, with people trying equipment out, where does that fit in all of this, again? We had talked earlier about people might wanting, wanting to come and try out an ATV or a UTV or even a, try out a, a small tractor.
I could have the applicant come back up and show you. You know, the testimony wasn't, all of this goes on at the current location, which is much smaller. And the traffic to this area, since these are such large purchases, is not like a mall, not like your, you know, other typical retail facilities. So it's much more spaced out, let's say, as opposed to on top of each other. So there really is not a lot of co-mingling of people coming and doing all of these things at the site at the same time. But I could certainly have the applicant come up and show you, you know, where, where he plans to have and do certain things on, on one of the sheets, if that would be helpful.
And there won't be any trying out on grass or off of paved area?
Just come up so it can hear.
So, at my current facility in Flemington, we actually have, in, in the parking lot area in the rear, it's kind of a circular design of the parking lot where people can go around in a circle essentially. But we also do have a small grass kind of course, in a sense, for driving maybe a tractor or driving a go-kart and around in a circle, that kind of thing. So, it would, that was kind of my intention was to go kind of away from the traffic and everyone, because again, you're only gonna have trucks coming into that area, at least eighteen-wheelers, maybe once a month. And then you have people that are picking up, which, when, at a 40-foot width and a truck and a small trailer, you don't even need to go back there most of the time to make the turn. You can just purely make the U-turn. So you can use the back area for those types of arrangements.
Which is totally separate from the parking area, employee parking, customer parking?
It's away from all the traffic.
Does that answer your question, okay?
Well, I'm still wondering about the grass. Do you still have an area where they can go off?
I, I would definitely, I mean, I would like to. I mean, typically, if, if you didn't have someone on the pavement that kind of in this area where there isn't a lot of traffic, then you would have something just a little off to the side. I mean, you're talking a very small area to do something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the, the service bay area, from the arrows on, the pavement markings on sheet, the site plan, sheet four.
Okay.
Is that intended to be a one-way, one-way direction under that canopy?
Yes.
Okay, so, you can only go one way under the canopy and you have to loop back out?
Correct.
Is there anything needed there to keep people from coming out that way through the canopy?
There are no signage right now that's proposed. And again, what we anticipate really in that area is very limited traffic. It's not going to be a typical space on the property where visitors or customers are gonna come and park. If they're coming in that area, it's decided to drop equipment off or to pick something up.
So they'll have an employee with them directing what to do, and, okay.
Correct.
Wow, that's, the only reason there is to drop off equipment or pick it up?
Correct.
Turn back out, okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
I have a question regarding landscaping, does this landscaping, right?
Yes.
Do you propose any landscaping in the rear?
Yes, so, right now in the rear, as I previously indicated as part of my testimony, what we've done is to try to maintain as much of that natural screening that we have or the natural vegetation that exists. So, we're not proposing any plantings on, towards the rear. But if there's any part of that that perhaps needs to be supplemented, we are certainly amenable to that. But right now, the plan is to maintain as much of that natural vegetation. It has been there probably for 30 or 40 years. It's somewhat well-established, is, we're trying to maintain as much of that.
Like healthy trees and, and it will remain? Because you, you also removed in quite a number, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wonder how the residents in the rear, what they're gonna see when they come to the back?
So, the residences, that, where they are, they are probably about 25 feet higher where their houses are than where their property is. So, in the wintertime, when the leaves are down, they're most likely going to be able to see the roof of the building. But I think in the summertime, just given the change in elevation, the difference from where they are to where we are, and then just the natural vegetation of the canopy, very little of this development, I believe, is going to be visible from the residents.
Do you have more, more testimony to go through? I know people have other questions, but I just want to let you finish.
I was gonna go through the review letters. Unless you had any other, anything else. We're gonna have the architect to deal with the lighting and signage.
Do you want to ask your question?
I have one question. You mentioned that some of the land that it will, that this property will be using is You mentioned that some of the land that it will, that this property will be using is currently farmland, or is currently being farmed, did you say at the very beginning?
Correct.
Yeah, how much farmland is currently, what, what percent, what piece of acreage? How, how much acreage is currently farmland that will no longer be farmland?
I don't have an exact number.
What do you estimate is it an acre, is it?
So I would say that probably about maybe three acres, it looks like, that's actively farmed right now. And the development will probably, I believe, we're disturbing roughly about 2.2 acres, which includes some of the wooded area in the back. So I believe this development will probably occupy about 1.7 acres of that existing farmland.
And will some of, so it sounds like some of that land that's currently being farmed will still be farmed?
It could be, I'm not, I'll defer that to the applicant. But certainly our intention where the development is, that's where the improvements are. If there's an opportunity there for other activities, I will defer those questions to the applicant. But there's no intention right now along that westerly side of the property to install any type of improvement.
Okay.
If the applicant owns that property?
So.
Or contract purchase?
Between that, between the westerly property line and where the curb is proposed, there's about ninety feet
Okay.
of the applicant's property that's currently being farmed in that area.
Okay. And we don't know, we haven't had testimony on what's going to happen like that?
Correct.
Where does the dumpster go?
So the dumpster is actually proposed adjacent to the, the loading area. It's actually, as you pull into the driveway and you go towards the north, the dumpster is straight at the end of that outdoor storage area. So typical track truck pulls up, forks are extended, dumpster is enclosed in a onboard, onboard fence screening. Dumpsters are picked up, dumped, truck can back up and then turn around within that area and then exit the property.
Is that a daily, weekly?
And I'm asking because when you lose the trees, you lose the sound barrier. And I just want to kind of try to get an impact, feel like an impact of people behind.
Yeah, so what kind of garbage does the facility generate?
Typically would be cardboard and, you know, daily trash. That's really it. But even in our current state, I get a very small dumpster dumped bi-weekly. So if you increase the size of the dumpster a little bit, I mean, I could even go monthly with it.
Thank you. You would be willing though, if the board saw fit to as a condition, in the event that you needed to increase the amount of recyclable pickups, you would, you would do that?
Absolutely.
As necessary? I, you know, I'm going to say it now so I don't forget. I think some of the plants on here, one or two of them may actually be invasive, the Norway. Okay, I don't have to say anymore, tell me, what happened?
I'm not quite sure. I think, I know the azalea is one of them, and then the Norway maple. Aside from the fact that I like the way the Norway maple looks, that's, there are other evergreens and shrubs that I will utilize for those two.
Please no invasives, I'm not.
Yes.
We could certainly work with the. I would prefer to see natives, I'm not going to go crazy, but no invasives, please.
No, I, I do agree with you. It was an oversight on my part, so.
All right, so just quickly, I'd like to go through, well, not quickly, but I would just like to go through. There were a number of letters that were issued by your board's professionals, and I responded to each one of those via my letter dated January fifteenth of this year. So I'll just go through to the extent that we haven't previously discussed them. I'm going to start with the board engineer's review letter dated December ten, twenty twenty-four. And I'm just going to skip to the items that the engineer can testify to. I'm going to go to section two. This is on for anyone who's looking at my letter, page three into four. Section two, land development ordinance, item three A. There is a notation, there was a comment that there was no water storage tank shown on the plans. Could you please advise us what we're going to do with regard to that?
So in any future plan revisions, we will provide the 10,000 gallon. We will provide the water storage tank that's required by the ordinance. Right now, where we anticipate putting the tank would be along that westerly side of the parking area, in that open area. These tanks are typically about ten feet in diameter, and depending on the volume, the length will vary. The tanks are generally, they typically only require about three feet of cover for frost protection. That area is adequate for our particular needs to install the tank.
And it doesn't, does it impact the impervious cover?
No, no, the tank is fully buried. The only parts of the tanks that are usually visible are the draft lines and then the fill lines.
And please feel free, as we're going through this, to jump in if you have any questions, comments, whatever. Next section, section four, with regard to lighting, there's a number of comments there. Would we be willing to revise the plans as a condition of any approval to reflect that information?
Yes.
Okay, and one of the questions was, is there any, any conflicts with regards to light holes and building overhangs would be removed as well, correct?
Correct.
Next section, section five, we do have EV requirements in connection with this development, correct?
Correct.
And how many parking spaces, make-ready parking spaces are required?
I believe one is required for this application.
Correct, and we can revise the plans to show where that would be located?
Yes.
Section six, subsection C, this is with regard to groundwater recharge. Actually, actually section C and D, stormwater quality, and then stormwater management, stormwater quantity. All of these comments, we would be willing to comply with as a condition of any approval, correct?
Correct.
Some of them, for instance, groundwater recharge, provide all soil log and permeability testing information, any additional soil testing that may be required, and everything under the stormwater quality and quantity sections, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then there's some general comments. This would be under subsection F on page eight. There was a question with regard to the pipe diameter from CB three to CB two. It's shown as eighteen inches on the utility plan, twenty-four inches on the storm profile. Which one is correct?
The eighteen-inch diameter.
And we can revise the plans as a condition to be consistent?
Yes.
The next comment is with regard to the outlet control structure details. They are different on the utility and the profile plans than they are on the construction details sheet in the hydrology report. Which one is correct?
So the detail sheet will have to be revised to match.
And that can be done as well as a condition of any approval?
Correct.
There's a comment with regard to labeling the pipe diameter on the profile sheet. We could do that as a condition of approval, correct?
Correct.
The comments on page nine, D through I, we can also amend the plans as a condition of any approval for those as well?
Yes.
Okay, J was with regard to the ground surface cover for the outdoor equipment storage area. We did testify as to that. K required amending the plans to show the limits of the clay core for the retention basin. We would be willing to do that as a condition?
Yes.
And obviously with all of these conditions and these changes, we would work with the board engineer to do them to his satisfaction, correct?
Correct.
And the planner as well?
Correct.
The rest of that as well, location of the gravel access for the detention basin on the grading plan. We could place that in there as well.
Correct.
Is there a fence proposed around the perimeter of the bio basin?
So there is no fence proposed around the basin.
Can we provide calculations for the anti-seep collar placement and spacing?
Yes.
Can I just explain to the board what that refers to?
So anti-seep collars are essentially concrete masses or blocks that are constructed along a pipe. Typically what happens whenever any utility is installed, that soil, utility conduit interface, it, lack of a better term, I guess, it's a weak point where water has a tendency to seep, and it'll travel along that interface. What the collar does, it increases the length that the water has to travel. And the primary purpose for doing that is that you don't get any type of settlement, or you don't get the finer particles in soil moving with the water, with groundwater, where it ultimately gets discharged. And then I've seen it where that type of scenario, when it's not done properly, that you end up with trench settlement. Because even though today, when it's done, things look great, come back a year later after a lot of the fines have migrated along the pipe, you've got different settlements in, and typically it's right along the trench and you can see it. The collar basically eliminates that type of settlement because the aggregator, those finer particles cannot travel that distance.
Okay, and we'll provide those calculations to the satisfaction of the board engineer?
Yes.
Okay, and the next one deals with the correct discharge pipe diameter size and the revised detail to be consistent. The correct size of that pipe is thirty-six inches, correct?
Correct.
We need to prepare a best management practices, operation and maintenance manual. We could do that as a condition of any approval?
Yes.
Again, to the board professional satisfaction?
Correct.
There's a question as to confirming the outlet structure trash rack top size. Can you just explain our response to that, please?
So the outlet structure is a square box, and the inside diameter is five feet by five feet. The trash rack has to sit on top of the outlet structure. Generally, it's bolted to the top of the structure. And the intent of the trash rack is to eliminate those larger debris from getting into the structure, which causes problem by clogging the pipe. The trash rack has to be larger than the inside diameter of the box. And right now, the detail that we have, the trash rack has to be enlarged in order for it to fit on top of the outlet structure. So we will revise the plans accordingly to make sure that geometrically, when the trash rack is constructed, it sits on top of that structure and can be bolted in place.
Okay, so once that's revised in connection with, and that would be item Q on page 10 of our response, there would be no conflict between that increased size and the orifice in the weir as, as indicated by the board engineer?
Correct.
The outlet structure reference, would that be pre-cast or cast in place?
Uh, pre-cast.
And then there's just a couple more items that are referenced there, T, U, and V from the board engineer. We can provide all of those revisions as a condition of any approval, correct?
Correct.
So now we get into the site plan details, section three. This is on page 11. So let's talk about the canopy a little bit. This talks about the proposed canopy is located seven feet from the face of the building and contains pullback in four places. We just need to amend the plans to show the proper dimensions, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that canopy does not need a variance or anything?
Correct.
We talked about the lot coverage in the next section, section 3B. Maximum lot coverage that we're proposing right now is 23%, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, if we were to, if the board saw fit to change that proposed grass area for the outdoor equipment to grass pavers, we would be willing to put those grass pavers there, but we would not exceed the permitted lot coverage of 25%, correct?
Correct.
And we talked about the lot area being less than the five acres required. There's a number of other plan revisions that continue on page 12. We'd be willing to do as a condition of approval. Let's look at D. Revise the site plan to show the proposed column supporting the service bay canopy. Actually, we did talk about the vehicle circulation underneath that. Mr. O'Brien asked about the one-way circulation, so we've covered that. Any issue with regard to circulation underneath the canopy?
No.
What's the canopy's height at its lowest point?
Oh, fifteen feet.
Okay, and are you aware of the, the largest vehicle that would, basically a tractor trailer that would have to travel beneath it?
Typically tractor trailers are less than thirteen and a half feet to the highest point.
So no issue with clearance underneath the canopy?
Correct.
You did testify as to the adequate circulation, but would you be willing to provide any vehicle turning templates if necessary?
Certainly.
Okay, as a condition of approval to the satisfaction of board engineer? Subsection G. Revise the site plan to clarify the intended purpose of the paved area southwest of the trash enclosure. Could you just explain that for the board?
This is the reference to the, essentially the K-turn area that's needed for tractor trailers. In order to back into the loading zone and exit the property, trucks will pull forward into that K-turn area, back up. And then that provides some adequate room to man.
To maneuver through the site?
Okay, so that was the K-turn area that we previously testified to?
Correct.
Board engineers asked that the plans be amended to incorporate and label dimensions of the bio retention based on emergency spillway on all the plans. We can do that as a condition, correct?
Yes.
There's a question with regard to access for emergency vehicles and personnel. You testified that a tractor trailer could travel the site. Would that be sufficient also for any sort of emergency vehicles?
Correct.
Let's talk about the JCPNL easement. Is there one located on the property?
So there isn't, utility lines along the front of the property. That, and there is an easement that's recorded for JCPNL to actually permit those lines to be there and also to be maintained by JCPNL. The easement is centered on the utility poles along the front of the property. And the applicant's proposal right now does not have any structures within that easement. There's grading that will be done under the utility lines, but there's no physical structure that's being proposed within that easement area.
Okay, and to the extent we need to revise the plans or the survey to show that easement, we could certainly do that?
Correct.
Okay, we can identify any inlets as a condition of any approval on the plans?
Yes.
And we just talked about the fence atop the retaining wall. There was another comment later on that indicated that the fence cannot exceed four feet in height. Would we be willing to reduce that? Would that be adequate if we reduce that fence atop the retaining wall to four feet?
That's acceptable.
Okay, section four on page 13 talks about construction details. There's a number of items there that the board engineers identified. To the extent that they are not shown on the drawings, can we revise them and incorporate those as a condition?
Yes.
Outside agency approvals, we do have County Soil Conservation District approval?
Correct.
And the Health Department, where are we with that?
So the soils test data was submitted to the Health Department. We have to actually design the septic system and submit that to the Health Department. That has not been done.
That would be done though, and obviously need to be approved as a condition of any approval?
Correct. The applicant did complete the necessary testing to ensure that we could design acceptable septic system in accordance with the township's ordinance. The tests were completed well over a year ago. They were witnessed by the township representative. The results are acceptable.
And we do have an exemption from the county planning board, is that correct?
Correct.
And we'll serve letters, we would obviously get that as well as a condition of any approval?
Correct.
Do we need any approval from the DOT?
Yes, obviously, Rituoto is a DOT highway. Pending favorable action by the board, we will certainly make an application for access and drainage permits from the DOT.
And then the last comment from the board engineer's letter, outside agency approvals, talked about JCPNL, but you just testified that there's no improvements within that area, only, only grading?
Correct.
There'll be any approval? Okay, so I think that takes care of all the comments in the board engineer's letter.
I have one quick, just go back to the stormwater and the, the waiver from the DEP. I was talking with Eric, there is a mitigation plan in the township's municipal stormwater management plan. If you're going to be obtaining a variance for any of the requirements of stormwater. So we would have to look at that and, and discuss. stormwater, so we would have to look at that and, and discuss what the township would be acceptable to the township as, you know, mitigation for not complying if the DEP is able to grant you a, a variance from that size limitation, so, just so the boards are aware of that as well.
And just so we understand, um, is that something that you would like to see before we make the application to the DEP, or if the DEP approves the waiver?
Right, once they approve it, then we can figure out which, which mitigations scheme we would look at to, as long to DEP's okay with?
Okay.
The initial variation.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the applicant obviously has no, no issue with that as well. Um, okay, and then, the next letter, um, was issued by the board planner, and this was dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, um, I think that was your predecessor, right, Ken? So, to the extent, obviously, that you have any questions or, or other thoughts as we go through this, please. Um, our planner will go through all of the variances that are required. Um, I also have our architect that will testify as to some issues. One of the questions that the board planner brought up was that the square footages on the engineering and architectural drawings were different, um, but believe it or not, they're both actually correct. Um, can you just explain to the board how that could be the case?
Um, so, in terms of lot coverage, floor area ratio, and to determine parking requirements, from a site design perspective, we normally look at the outside of the building, the exterior perimeter wall. The numbers that the architect has on his drawings are based on the interior or the actual usable square footage, so, his reflects doesn't include the thickness of the various walls, whereas mine is looking at the gross square footage of the building, measured as best we can along the outside perimeter. So, that's why there's a discrepancy between the two.
Now, for purposes of calculating any square footages, any impervious coverage, any building coverage, uh, did you use the larger or the smaller measurements?
The larger.
Okay, so for, uh, that's a very conservative approach. Um, there was a comment that the, um, there was a reference to single-family requirements in the bulk table, we'll obviously remove that as a condition of any approval?
Correct.
Um, we are proposing building mounted light fixtures, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if there's any sort of nightlight testing that might need to be done as a condition of any approval, we could certainly, um, do that to the satisfaction of the board's professionals.
Correct.
Okay, um, what are the light poles, what kind of materials will the light poles be comprised of?
Um, so, the poles are generally, it could be one of two options, um, fiberglass or metal, um, aluminum or steel. Normally, with the pole, the ones we typically specify are the darker, non-reflective, um, colors, typically browns or black, um, not a glossy finish, but something that generally fits in with the architectural scheme, but doesn't really reflect much in terms of light shining on it. Um, that's what the applicant is proposing. We haven't finalized, we finalized the fixture design that we're choosing for the property and the mountain heights, but in terms of the actual finishes and so forth, um, we haven't determined what color they're going to be at this point, but-
Are they shielded at all, is they downlit?
So, they're one hundred percent fully, or cutoff fixtures, um, in accordance with the definition for full cutoff fixtures, these lights do not provide any night glow or, or any light above the actual light source. Um, they're the ones that are generally used now throughout New Jersey and in most places for, um, sight lighting.
And, so, they're not going off the property either?
Um, the only place where there's spillage beyond the property line is at the driveway entrance, and typically, with entrances, you want to have some lighting at the entrance so that if someone is approaching the entrance at night, that there's some visibility as to where they need to turn. Um, that's the only place, the remainder of the property, all of the lights, given the location of the building and where the parking lot is located, all of the light is well contained within the property limits.
And, at night?
Correct, at night.
Are the lights on?
Oh, so, in terms of the hours of operation, um, I would defer to the applicant.
I guess I'm getting to what happens when, you know, when, when you're not operating, you know, are the lights off, can they be on a, are they on some sort of motion activated switch, I mean, we certainly want to keep-
Yeah, um, we can keep them on a timer.
And, and obviously, if there's any requirements to light the parking lots, you know, for a particular period of time, we'd have to comply with that as well, I don't know if the ordinance has any, or, um, if the board professionals has any preference, but, um, that's what the applicant's intention is.
Yeah, I'm mostly looking to minimize, minimize the light-
Correct.
-spread, and especially at night, um, and, you know, trying to keep, sort of, with the rural and quiet nature, and, um, you know, I've turned the lights off.
In connection with the nightlight test, we could also discuss at that point in time, are they, are they having dimmable lighting, is that, is that available?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
We could certainly put dimmers on the lights as well, in, in connection with any sort of, uh, nightlight test, um, we could come up with a, a game plan for when to turn them off, uh, have them dimmable, if there's a certain, uh, foot candle that you would like to have on consistently at night, because that is the other, you know, issue, um, you know, potentially, safety purposes.
I would think we would, you know, I'm not, I want to speak out of term, but I would think we would want no light unless there was somebody on the property.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to speak for the, the other members of the board, I can go, you know, I need to think about that a little bit, but-
Yep. So, I'm saying, we could certainly work, work together and come up with a good plan.
We have a dark skies ordinance.
We do not.
We don't, but we have a preference.
Yes.
I think everybody does.
Yes, and, and that's what we're getting at, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
The spirit of a dark skies ordinance or standards.
I mean, the hours are what they are, and you're definitely not dealing with a, a facility that's going to be open late at night, again, some towns prefer to have a little bit of lighting, just to limit any possibility for that to be any sort of, you know, hangout area or something along those lines for safety purposes. Um, if, if your wish is not for that to happen, and there's, there's no issue, um, from the applicant's side, we could certainly work with that as well.
I mean, I would want to hear from the, from the engineer as well, but my instinct would be, the lights are off, if somebody walks on the property, there's a motion detector that turns the lights on for safety and security.
And that is obviously at night, when you're not off, when they're not operating.
Yep, yep.
Just to be clear, and, and when you are operating downlit, shielded lights.
I think that's doable, and there is a detail of the lighting on the plans.
Yeah. Um, there was testimony from the applicant, uh, that the lighting, it, that the, I'm sorry, that the signage would be illuminated, building mounted sign, uh, that will be compliant with any requirements of the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Um, we talked about landscaping, am I not mistaken that the sign is larger than our ordinance?
Yes.
Much larger.
It is.
Significant.
Yes.
The, the wall-mounted signage, correct, yes, but I was talking about the illumination, if there was any illumination requirements, uh, within the ordinance, that would be compliant. The signage, you will, your testimony, the size-
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely correct.
I was not, okay.
Yep. Uh, we talked about the lower elevation of the outdoor equipment area, uh, we talked about the screening to the highway, um, and just in general, uh, since the board planner did not have the ability to, uh, provide a, a, a letter prior to tonight, you would be willing to, the applicant would be willing to work with the professionals to amend landscaping, not only to remove any sort of invasive plantings, but also, uh, with regard to locations and things like that, to tweak it a little bit if necessary.
Certainly, any future comments generated by the board's professional, we will certainly, um, address those comments.
I think the, um, board planner, previous board planner, did bring up quite a bit about the landscaping, and I'll leave that to Ken to, to get, talk about, uh, we definitely don't want to gloss over that.
Nope, not at all. Um, we talked about parking, how we came up with that, signage details, we do have a signage exhibit that the architect will put on the record, that we'll distribute to everybody, and we talked about the fence being reduced to be compliant with the four feet height requirements. Um, so, I think that covers all the comments within the two letters, I know there was a lot, um, for the most part, the applicant is really willing to comply with all the conditions that were set forth in both of them, and all the comments as a condition of approval, it does require a number of plan revisions, um, but we could certainly go through each one of those and, and do that as a condition of approval. Uh, anything else for the board?
That's it.
Just a couple of questions on the landscaping, um, uh, with regards to the additional buffer plantings along the rear and possibly on the sides to help with view sheds into the property, um, the applicant stipulates to working with their office to come up with a, a plan, specifically evergreens, I mean, we're, we're dealing with probably a wooded area, um, as you start to pull away layers of that, it will expose the property, so, I think, I think evergreens, uh, certainly make sense. Uh, with regards to the size of trees, with the applicant being willing to increase sizes of some of the trees, some of the, like, the Norway spruce are just too small, they're four feet big.
And they're invasive.
Well, Norway spruce, Norway spruce are not, Norway maple are.
Oh, my bad.
So, you're, you're correct on the Norway maple side, but there are a couple of invasives, spirea and azalea, well, azalea is not necessarily invasive, it's just deer love it, so, I, that, we don't want to see that, so, yes, we can work with the applicant, I just wanted to clarify, there's a couple of those items on the evergreen plantings, um, and then, definitely want to see the, uh, JCPN L easement, because it obviously impacts what the tree planting will be along the front's area, so, we want to make sure that we are locating the trees in such a way that they actually look like street tree plantings, but also not getting in the way of, of the lines, so that they, they, they get cut into ridiculous shapes, uh, in thirty years. Um, I think, other than that, there doesn't seem to be anything else, uh, that I have questions on, uh, but as long as the applicant's willing to, to work with our office on the landscaping, satisfied.
Definitely, thank you. I'm just looking at the other, the other items on the lighting, lighting fixtures, we talked about that. Anyone have questions?
Well, we, we did talk about in the back, even though a lot is staying there, you know, we want to make that shield, both for noise and for privacy for the people in back, so, I mean, that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, I, I will say that I'm, I, I actually pulled out the renderings, which I recognize they're not plans, um, and I'm trying to imagine this building with the, I'll call them display tractors, for lack of a better word, they're, they're intermixed with the plantings, and we've got the base in there, and I'm, I, I'm-
Yeah, that's what I was trying to-
I'm not a very, I'm not visualizing, I'm not, I'm not getting there, um, maybe we can talk about that, doesn't have to be now, it could be the planner, but I'm just, I'm just leaving that out there.
Okay. I think our color elevations might help a little bit in that regard.
Yeah, I-
Anyone else on the board?
I would still like to reiterate about input from the people who live behind there. I know you guys said you reached out there once, but if nobody's, uh, heard from them, I think we should make another effort to find out how they feel about all this still, because they're living there, this is their homes, so, I think that'd be a good idea to kind of reach out to them a little, I don't know if that'd be up to us.
Not, not really, because their, their only, um, requirement is to give the twenty, two-hundred-foot notice at the beginning of the hearing.
Okay.
You know, and, and they did satisfy that, so-
Yeah, okay.
I imagine they're within the two-hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all within two-hundred.
They're directly adjacent, so, I mean, the one good thing is, uh, you know, I don't know who's here tonight, um, but presumably, if there's a problem or if they had questions,
Be open to the board.
They know they have the opportunity to be here, so-
Okay.
But you bring up a very good point, and I hope if they did have some questions, that they'd know where to go.
Well, you know, we don't have an obligation to do it again, but because we're meeting on a Tuesday instead of a Monday, the times change, we might meet next week again, it seems like, it might be nice to notify them in some way again, I'm, I'm kind of with you.
I mean, our meeting was always Tuesday, this meeting was always Tuesday?
Yeah.
Because it was Martin Luther King Day?
Yeah, it was for us, and we knew that.
No, but, but last year, when we set the dates, it was all, like, we're moving future meetings, but this meeting was set a year ago, it's Tuesday.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not, I'm not, just, I just want to let you know, we, we-
Yeah.
We're not changing dates here and there, um, they did get the two-hundred-foot letter, I'm just-
Yeah, I mean, when you, um, had this listed for the December meeting, people would have expected that it would have been heard, right?
Yeah.
They would have showed up, there wasn't any, uh, any kind of cancellation or anything that was, that went out, it was just going to be heard on the sixteenth, so, that, at that point, um, anybody who was interested would have been there then, you know, and they, they should have heard the announcement that this is being continued to tonight, you know, I mean, that's how the law is on it anyway.
Yeah, and we, we also talked about it from, from the, I'm pretty sure, I would have mentioned it from the dates, like, I wouldn't, you know, I would have let them know. I, 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 I hear you, but they, they've been told, and I, I don't remember seeing people here, anyway, I'm speculating at this point, I won't be doing that. Um, anything else from anyone else on the board? Anything else from you?
No.
Um, we have one, may I have a motion open to the public for questions for this witness?
Motion.
All in favor, we are open to the public for questions for, for this witness? Going once, going twice, okay, without objection, we are closed. So, I have a question, looking at the time, we have, we have a planner, is that it?
Um, I did have the architect, it was going, he gave you the signage information, we were looking for the elevations.
Yep, um, we're coming up on ten o'clock, so, we typically don't take testimony past the ten or ten-thirty, I'm trying to remember.
Well, you have your own.
Yeah, um, I also, I don't want to rush you, but I also know you're, you're eager to get this through, um-
Understood.
Yeah, we did try to offer, what, we did, we are prepared to, um, have another meeting a week from now?
Yep.
So that we can get through this, because I recognize this applicant has waited a while.
Thank you.
So, uh, is this a good time to stop, do you want to, or do you want to go through the planner?
Can we get the architect in, who I think pretty quickly can go through this and see where we are?
Sure.
Perfect, thank you. And we certainly don't want to rush you either, um, but we are, we are trying?
Yes.
Chairperson Dedwiler, um, the board shall be under no obligation to consider new matters after ten PM, new matters, and take no new testimony after ten-thirty.
Thank you.
Okay. I think it's ten or ten-thirty.
Oh, I just found it.
Thank you. It's helpful, happy.
So, I think we're on to eight?
Uh, okay, we're on to eight-five. Um, I need to qualify your witness.
Okay. Sorry, can you just give your name and address to the board?
Uh, Gary R. O'Connor, architect, uh, two oh four North Union Street, Lambertville, New Jersey, suite one oh five.
Okay, can you give the board a penalty for qualifications or education, please?
I am a bachelor architect from, uh, New Jersey Institute of Technology, I am licensed in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut, in that order, I think I'm thirty-five years, uh, licensed in New Jersey at this point.
Okay, and you were, uh, have you appeared before boards, uh, throughout the state of New Jersey?
I have.
Okay, and you were accepted as an expert in the field of architecture before those boards?
I have been.
Okay, I'd like to submit him as an expert in the field of architecture, accepted, thank you very much. Uh, okay, so, you were engaged as the architect in connection with this matter?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and you met with the applicant to design, um, signage, uh, the architecture of the building, um, as well as, uh, I guess you probably had some input on lighting as well, correct?
Uh, sure.
Okay, uh, so, let's start, so, we're going to mark first as exhibit A five, uh, the signage, can you just-
Okay, I'd like to submit him as an expert in the field of architecture. Accepted. Thank you very much. Okay, so you were engaged as the architect in connection with this matter?
Yes.
And you met with the applicant to design signage, the architecture of the building, as well as, I guess you probably had some input on lighting as well, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So let's start, so we're going to mark first as Exhibit A5, the signage. Can you describe this for the board?
There are two signs on this supplementary drawing here titled S4. The first one at the top of the page is the proposed building sign. It shows a sign area of 96 feet. It's six foot high by 16 foot wide. It's placed in the building over the front door. It's underneath a deep overhang and on the back, on the side of the building, right above the doors. As you can see, there's a large black background as part of the sign. And of course, when you calculate signage, you calculate, you know, the whole thing, whether it's, you know, got a black background or not. But the actual, what's going to pop here, because it's internally illuminated, the only part where the light is going to pop through is where it's, you know, white and red for the most part.
Because the light's not going to come through the black portion?
No.
Okay. But we do require a variance for this wall sign?
Yes, it exceeds the maximum 32 allowed square footage.
Okay, so then below it is the.
That is the site sign, and that is 28 square feet. So you can just, you know, see in comparison, you know, the scale from one to the other. But that one complies, so it's 28 versus the 32 max. And that's an oval, you know, sign.
Where is that?
Here. That is on the site plan. It's down in front of Bio Basin to the right of the entrance, sort of between the right of the entrance and sort of the middle of the.
So it's over, like, here?
Yep, so right here?
But it's not shown on this. It's like here?
No, yep. Yes, and once we get to that, we'll mark that as A6. That's going to be the next exhibit that you have. But yes, right, so right here to the, I guess that would be east of the entrance drive to the south of the retention basin.
Now, is that on the JCPNL easement?
It would have to be outside of the easing area. All right, well, it would be placed outside of the easing area.
Yeah, that's why the easement has to be shown.
Yep, yeah, exactly. That's what I was looking to see, if I could see it there. But no, it would be placed outside of the easing area, because of course we could not put a structure within that easing area. The next sheet you have in front of you, we'll mark as A6. And can you just describe this for the board, Gary?
Yeah, there are two renderings, and you have these on your bigger plans. But I just provided these for convenience, so you're not looking around with these big sheets. And the top is a rendering from the northeast view. And that is from where the highway is. You can see the edge of the road. And just to get a feel for what it looks like, you can see the Bio Retention Basin, you know, swell in this rendering. And that is accurate based on the engineer's, you know, grading plan. We produced this.
And you could see the sign that we were talking about, the building sign.
The building sign, right, exactly.
And it's under that overhang?
Under the overhang.
Okay, and then the bottom rendering is just a little bit closer?
Yeah, it's more of a central view, and it's more, you know, more of a bird's eye view. It's a little bit higher up.
And it does have that agricultural feel with the windows and what the applicant testified to?
Yeah, we designed this, you know, to create something that's visually pleasing as you're coming down the highway. I mean, we broke up the, you know, the long expanse of the building with some large, you know, brackets, overscaled, you know, brackets at these larger overhangs to also shield from the southern sun, but, you know, to let our display sales area, you know, be able to have some visibility, you know, from the street looking in and vice versa. And also provide some, you know, shielding for, you know, the inclement day from rain coming down from patrons walking on the sidewalk.
This might dovetail nicely into the next drawing that you have there, which is A7. This is the floor plan, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so the display area you were talking about, that the windows would showcase, why don't you just?
Yeah, so the display area are sort of like, you know, big square bays. And that's where you can see on the floor plan, you can see the dashed-in brackets, wood brackets. And, you know, going from the north side, you've got one display area. Then there's an overhead garage door for moving things in and out. And then, of course, there's a vestibule with two sets of double doors between, and that's between two smaller display areas. And then again, another display area on the left-hand side with fixed windows on either side of it. And incidentally, the, so it's a mix. The exterior is, you know, it's a classic sort of, you know, barn red vertical siding. And there's also stone where you have the, some field stone at these fixed windows. There's three points along the facade where we have the stone at the overhead door and these two fixed windows on the western side.
And this mixture of materials is to create interest and aesthetically, aesthetically?
Right. I mean, it's using the natural palette of materials that we find on barns in the area.
I don't really have any other questions. I'd love to move on to my planner.
Can I ask a question about the proposed road sign? Where is the road sign in his rendering? So from 202, where does the road sign show up?
So I think if we, yeah, if we could look at the top rendering.
It would actually, right now, it would be sort of toward the, closer to the road and about one-third down between poles. And right now, the way it's shown on the drawing, it would be right underneath the poles. So it's going to need to scoot in some.
And did I read correctly that the road sign requires a variance because it's only five feet back instead of 10 feet?
We will talk about that. Our planner will talk about that.
All right, okay.
What is the need for the building to be so tall?
Well, it's a large sales floor. It's very deep. And to have a reasonable, it's a pitched roof. And you can see it's not a very steeped pitch roof. But in order to have a reasonable pitch on the roof, it wants to have a reasonable height, especially for the size and scale of the room inside. Can you imagine this room here, for instance? This is a higher-than-normal height, but if it was eight foot compressed, you know, this room would feel awful. So just based on the scale of this room, you know, the ceiling height here has to be proportionately reasonable to feel, you know, proper.
And there are going to be customers coming in there, looking at the equipment?
Of course.
And it needs to be, or the applicant would like it to be showcased in a well-lit, open, pleasurable area?
Absolutely.
And you did hear the testimony from the applicant that most, if not all, of the vehicles they're looking to store in there, so it would need to accommodate differing heights and differing sizes.
That's correct.
How tall is the building that he's using now?
I believe that, I'd have to double check for sure, but it's right around 18 to 20 feet.
And you can't store all your equipment inside your building, correct?
Yes, and part of it is for indoor storage, to be able to stack machines inside that Unrak system. That way it's not, that way we're not spilling into the outside of the building.
Can you give the board an idea of the Sweet Valley Farms building and the Rutgers building? The height of those, do you know by chance what the height is?
I don't know exactly, but looking at the Sweet Valley building, it certainly appears to me that it's, you know, it's higher than 20 feet. I'd say it's between 20 and 25 to the peak. And I'm not sure if across the street, they're governed under the same, they're in a separate.
No, I just wanted for character.
I think they're taller. They're a two-story building.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Have a motion open to the public? All in favor? We're open to the public for questions from this witness? Going once, going twice? That objection, we close to the public? So it is 10. You have one more? Do you want to? Yeah, if the board would indulge us, we would absolutely love to get the planner in. We appreciate it. And he's a veteran, so, I mean, he can get through this pretty quickly. I'll save you the time and stipulate that we've seen him before and accepted him as a witness.
Thank you so much. Hi, I'm still John Tikeen. It's nice to be here. I really appreciate it. I'm here to talk about it from a planning standpoint. It's actually a really nice application, though we do need a D1 use variance. I will admit that had I heard that the percentages of how much is farm equipment, I think I would have been arguing a little harder for it to be a permitted use, because the sale of farm equipment is a permitted use in the zone. But we're going to say that we're only 70% of the way there. So we do need a D1 use variance, and we'll talk about that as it relates to the negative criteria specifically. We also need a D6 variance in terms of that height that we talked about. And I think it's good the architect put on some information about, you know, to have a pitched building, et cetera, does drive that building up a little bit. My estimate of the adjacent Sweet Valley Farms building is that it does approach 30 feet in height when you look at the proportion of the doorways and the windows that are there. It does appear to be certainly more than the 20. Though, as with all of your ordinance provisions, as you know, your ordinance doesn't regulate appropriately so the height of farms and farm buildings and structures. So a lot of your uses kind of take advantage of that and call something a barn or whatever the case may be, and then get that exemption. So that is, you know, again, entirely appropriate. So in terms of, I'm going to talk about the D1 use variance first, the D6 second, and then I'll talk about the variances, the positive criteria, and then finish up with the discussion of the negative criteria. And I'm only going to do the negative criteria once, because it'll encompass all three. And I will mention design exceptions as well. So in terms of the D1 use variance, you have a few standards to meet. One is the site particularly suited for the use. Two is the proposed use advanced some of the purposes of municipal land use law. We do need to talk about medici, you know, why didn't the governing bodies own it this way? And then, as I said, we'll talk about the negative criteria when we get to the end. In terms of the particular suitability, the site is somewhat unique by the nature of its topography and its location. The location on Route 202 provides good visibility and access for the outdoor retail-oriented use. The farm stand used next door is quite similar in its size and scale. And it's quite similar in its use with the sale of outdoor sheds in addition to the farm products. And that's not uncommon for agricultural uses and agricultural sales uses to kind of spread out kind of into the adjacent, right? I guess Madalinas, the cheesecake people, were across the street at a farm stand, and now they're at their own facility across the street. So you do see that, they made my wedding cake. So I'm really, I was really excited about them being around. So again, it's not uncommon that the farm uses have some adjacency to them. The topography of the site is useful in that it slopes from back to the front, providing an opportunity to shield the retailer-oriented activities like parking and display from the residential uses to the rear where the building is located. As again, as the engineer said, where the homes are, that's fully 25 feet above the site area where the building is. From the back of the property, from the property, residential property line, so their nearest point to where the building is, to where the roof ridge of the building is, that difference is 20 feet. So if you're standing at the back of those residential properties, it's going to look like a 20-foot building in front of you. That's all you're going to see is 20 feet of structure. The rest of it is going to be buried, because again, you measure height from the front of the building. Not an average, not any of that. You take a height at the front of the building facing the street. So as it relates to this property, it kind of gives you the quote-unquote worst case. But for the residents to the rear, they're only seeing 20 feet. And that's a good thing. And this shields the parking lot from the residents as well. In terms of the positive criteria, we need to show that we're advancing some of the purposes zoning. I'd submit there are three to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. I, that's G, I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design arrangement. And M to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view towards lessing the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of the land. So I absolutely believe this is an appropriate location for this types of use with quasi-agricultural, quasi-retail commercial at this location on Route 202. I think that we're certainly creating a desirable visual environment here for this use. I think the ability to have this building, and admittedly, the building might be a little bit larger than you might think. But again, the applicant wants to have as much of his activity inside the building as he can. He understands and knows what he is. So he wants all those things inside so that they're not, you know, quote-unquote disturbing the neighbors, et cetera. And I think that that does make the building a little larger and a little taller than, you know, it might have otherwise been able to be. I've been to the applicant's facility in Flemington. Building overall is about 20 feet tall. Inside, the ceiling's at about 15. So again, it is a, their neighbor next door, the pool guy, is also a client. So I've had the opportunity to be there on several occasions. So it's the type of thing where you do, there are big machines, and these machines being more form-related are going to be bigger even though than what he has in Flemington. And then all the things that we talked about, the DP requirements, DOT requirements, et cetera, the county, the soils, all of those things have to come together and be put together by our engineer to coordinate all that. And that's, I think we've done a very nice job of accommodating all of those quote-unquote different masters. In terms of the D variance for height, this is a somewhat relaxed standard. The standard for the board to consider is really, does the site accommodate the proposed deviation? And does it offend in terms of the purpose of the height restriction? So in this instance, we have an ordinance that relies to a large degree, as I said, on the exemption of farms to kind of have some taller things, while severely restricting what I would call everything else. And the everything else here are those highway and office uses that provide for limited height compared to the modern standards for highway or office uses, essentially limiting any building to one story with a modest roof pitch. A building of any size with a pitched roof simply cannot comply, because the pitch of a roof always requires rise to be accommodated overrun. And if you get any amount of run, which in this instance is the depth of the building, the height just goes up, and that creates somewhat of a problem for us. The standard is, has the height accommodated? So in this instance, we provided a full front yard setback, a full rear yard setback. So our front yard setback of 137 feet, where 100 feet is required. The applicant is proposing a significant landscape offer along the rear and the sides of the building, as we said, to be supplemented as directed by your professionals. We're also, are retaining a significant amount of the existing vegetation to the rear. And again, that will be supplemented in those areas where the professionals feel it needs to be. The building is also at a significantly lower elevation to the residents behind, appearing as a 20-foot building to them. And the applicant is also proposing an attractive building. In keeping with the style and quality found and expected in East Amwell, it promotes harmonious, consistent visual environment, will not offending to the purpose of the height restriction. And again, it's intended to look like a barn or a classic farm stand along the road. And I think that architecture is going to be very attractive and very appropriate, especially given Sweet Valley Farm next door. So in terms of our C variances, we have several. First is our minimum lot area, just under five acres, 5.928. This is a C1 variance. We have a specific condition that relates to the land here. We don't have any more land to give. We only have 4.9228. So that is a hardship where we don't have any more land to give. We have a front yard setback where the area of the land, the area in the front is supposed to be open and occupied, planting areas. We're proposing parking in that area and a detention basin. And this is a C2 variance. We think it's a better planning alternative to place the parking in front of the building and retain the rear area as landscape for the residents behind. The shallow and odd shape of the lot also places somewhat of a C1 constraint on the site where it limits us, the site's kind of deeper on one side and shallow on the other. And when you're putting a rectangular building on that, it limits exactly where you can push things. We also need to require from the buffer area, again, a buffer strip of 100 feet is required along 202, where this buffer is only partially provided due to the proposed buyer retention and parking. Again, we think it's a C2 variance with a better planning alternative to put the parking in the back and retain the rear in a landscape state. We also require a parking variance, the parking standard for the ordinance, you don't have one for this. So it requires 78 parking spaces using the retail standard, and your retail standard at 1 per 150 is very high even for retail. But you do have a standard for farm machinery and supplies. So farm machinery is closer to the 1 per 5,000 that we used for warehouse, and we pulled the warehouse actually from Houplein next door. And 1 per 5,000 for warehouse is actually standard in the warehouse industry across the state and across the country. So as farm machinery, 1 per 5,000, we would require four spaces. So we're at 23. This ordinance requirement for retail would be 78. We think the 23 is appropriate, given the applicant has 12 where he is, and that is functioning just fine. In all of my visits to that property, I have been the only car in the front parked in the front of the building. So there's 12 spaces in the front, there's 18 spaces up the side, and all the employees park on the side for the two uses, and the 12 in the front are always empty. And again, it's a very unique retail sales, as he said, five to seven per week. So again, we think the parking is more than appropriate as proposed. The off sheet parking dimension, again, nine by 18 is the industry standard, your ordinance is 10 by 20. We think the nine by 20 is a nice accommodation in between. We think that it's more than appropriate, especially given that we think the parking will be very underutilized, and there won't be an issue with cars pulling in and out. Finally, we have variances relating to the sign. We have a sign dimension of 96 square feet. Your ordinance is at 32 square feet, kind of everything is 32 square feet. I guess you picked a sheet of plywood and said, "That's how big our signs are going to be." It's actually, I think it more relates to the village orientation of Ringos. 32-square-foot sign on a village scale building is entirely appropriate, most of them actually are 24. And, you know, that fits for a small village scale building. This is more of a farm-scale building, and this 96 square feet inside that one little niche in the front of the building is totally going to be in scale. I really think anything less than that, and I'm actually concerned that it'll be a little small as it is, anything less than that kind of looks funny. And again, it's like when someone gets a nose job done, and their nose is now too small for their face. That's not my problem, but when the, you know, things don't fit, it's the same thing for architecture. So we want to sign this proportional to the building, we think the 96 square feet is proportional, we think it's appropriately sized in scale, and it's a better planning alternative to have it. Finally, we do need a variance for the sign setback, five feet from the road as opposed to 10 feet. I think we put it there because we were a little concerned about fitting in between the bio basin and the front setback there. Again, there is some room between the curb and the front setback, so it's not five feet from the curb, it's probably about, proposed about 15 to 16 feet from the curb now. If there's room there in the board, you know, we could try to push that back. Again, it's kind of a balance of how close do you get to the basin, to that kind of top of the berm? Because as you push it further back, you're pushing it higher as well. I guess we really didn't describe the topography of the site very well, but the site from north to south along 202, the north side is 10 feet higher than the south side. And from front to back, we're 25 feet higher at the back property line than we are at the front property line.
It's going to be graded though, correct?
It is going to be graded, but we have to meet, we still have to meet, so the front and the back stay the same, we just kind of create a plateau in the middle. So you have the road, then you're going to slope up about four or five feet into the basin, and then you're going to slope up another two or three feet into the parking lot. So the parking lot's going to sit probably six or seven feet above 206. So you're going to kind of always be looking up, you know, think about it, if you made the dais a little taller, you'd kind of be looking up the hill towards things. So when you're talking about the view shed into the parking lot, you're really not going to have one because of the slope, and then you put the little, the bio basin and the plantings that are there, plus the three-foot hedge, it's going to draw your eye kind of right over the top of it. So again...
You can see a little bit on...
Yeah, you can see a little bit on the top of A6. I actually think it doesn't do the topography enough justice. But it's really going to force your eye kind of over the building, and I think that limits the impact of that, of the height. I think it limits the impact of the signage as well, it's just not, particularly at 100 feet back, again, that sign is going to be pretty small. Our positive criteria for the variances stays the same, same uses, same purposes, G, I, and M. Finally, in terms of the negative criteria, and this is kind of what we wrap up on, it kind of comes together. So the first is, can the proposal be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good? And that's kind of the public at large, our neighbors. In this instance, the proposed use is not a noxious use. It's an outdoor farm and power equipment use appropriate for a rural area. And we've had an applicant that has taken really, really specific and good care to design a building that he can put his product inside. He understands what he has, he understands what he is. And it's always good, you know, to be a good neighbor if those things as much as they can will be inside. And that's where they're going to be stored, that's where they'll be displayed, and that's best for his business, and that'll be best for our neighbors. And it's so nice when those things come together. The site will have significant landscaping and setbacks to accommodate the use, and it's oriented to the highway, and it's not oriented to the neighbors behind. For our neighbors behind, they're going to be looking at the blank top of a roof, and there is nothing better for a neighbor than a blank wall. It's the best neighbor you could possibly have. It doesn't make any noise, it doesn't shine any light, and Chair, Madam Chair, you're dead-on with the impact of light in the rural area. It's the one thing that really pops out. And I think you did a great job with what you did with Quick Check, and accommodated them for what they need, and it's still, it's not obtrusive, it doesn't spill. And I think this applicant has the ability to do the same thing. Fit it into the landscape, have the right amount of lights, have them shut off when they don't need to be on, have them be dim when they can be dim, and do the right thing there, and be a good neighbor, and not have any detriment to the public good. And I think the fact that our neighbors have not come out and they were noticed, and believe me, I'll admit, I pulled up, and this must be deceptive, your parking lot. I'm like, oh my, I'm like, oh my, we're going to have a full room, what are we dealing with? And I guess we all drove three cars here, I don't know, but, and, you know, that speaks volumes when neighbors aren't here. So again, I think that the applicant has done the best thing. They have a blank wall facing the back, no lights, no noise, no entrance, no activities, no nothing for our neighbors, and that's a good thing. And I think our presence is going to be a benefit to Sweet Valley next door. I think it's going to end up being a very nice symbiotic relationship. In terms of the zone plan and the ordinance, the purpose of your HO zone is to offer an opportunity to develop low-coverage, one-story structures for low-intensity non-residential uses that are situated in the vicinity of the village of Ringos. And I think that we are exactly what that is. We're a low-intensity non-residential use, we have low coverage, we're one-story, we're very similar to a permitted use of selling farm machinery. Farm machinery is specifically a permitted use in the HO district. And again, at 70% farm and landscape equipment, et cetera, like I said, if I was in front of a zoning officer, I'd be making a different argument to Tammy. But I think that we are that type of agricultural use, and we're going to support that agricultural use. The building is of that nature and scale, so it's certainly going to help to implement your plan and not impair it in any way. In terms of your master plan, your 2022 plan recommends expanding uses in the proposed highway business district, kind of taking office off the table, because you think your offices belong in Ringos, and I agree with you. To permit uses that support local farming, a broadened farm market use to incorporate other handcrafted crafts, breweries and distilleries, and experience-based uses likes axe throwing. And I always liked that axe throwing typically comes with a bar, so you drink and throw axes, but, in any event. These expansions recognize the limitation of the permitted use and a desire to expand around the edges of them, which a use like outdoor power equipment, farm machinery certainly does. So I think our use is kind of implementing a piece of what your master plan talked about to kind of be, how are we farm-adjacent? How do we continue to have our rural type of things, have rural-type uses that are here, but they recognize that what we have might be a little too limiting? We need to expand it a little bit, and I think this is the type of use that does exactly that. So therefore, I believe you have the ability to grant the relief requested, the D1 and the D6 variance and the C variance that I talked about. I did not talk about the design exceptions. We have landscape plan by a landscape architect. I think we have, I think we understand the landscaping standards well enough that we can certainly comply with the needs. Parking area landscaping, locational lighting fixtures, and lighting trespass at property lines. Again, the engineer went through all these, and I think that they certainly meet the standard, that their request is reasonable, it's within your power to grant for a site plan approval. And compliance is somewhat onerous and a hardship on the applicant. For example, lighting on the property line, you do want lighting in your driveway, that's better engineering, better planning, but it is a violation of your ordinance. So for these reasons, as I said, I think you have the ability to grant the relief, and I'm available for your questions.
Question for you. I appreciate the fact that, in the interest of time, you went very quickly. If you could just repeat for the slow guy here, the positive criteria, you said there were three of them, just list them, you don't need to...
Positive criteria are sufficient space in an appropriate location, meeting all their environmental requirements. So we meet all those standards. So this is the right place to have a farm equipment use, an outdoor equipment use on the highway, and we're meeting all the environmental standards through the lighting, landscaping, stormwater, et cetera. Desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good design and arrangement. I think the applicant has done really a yeoman job of having good design in the building, to have everything in the building that could fit inside, well-designed, well-laid out. And it's certainly, and I think the building is certainly going to be attractive. And then finally, M is, and M really recognizes that there are 17 different competing interests, and everybody thinks they're most important. And this board is the one that's kind of tasked with balancing them when you can. Now, DOT is not going to change their standards, they don't care. You know, but, for example, the DEP, we can work with them, they're reasonable in such a way. So, and you're challenged, you're charged with balancing that, and I think this application does that, and it coordinates those various procedures, and you are trying to keep the cost down and to use land efficiently. And I think we've used this land very efficiently, we've limited it as much as we could to the previously disturbed portions of the site. We are removing a little bit of the trees, really because that's the only place, you know, when you have 100-foot setback in the front, you have to kind of get to the bigger part of the site, and unfortunately, a part of that did have some of the trees. So there are the three positive criteria. Purposes of zoning we're advancing.
I'm sorry, I'm just pointing to the landy slog for the chair.
I asked her, I said, "Was M?" With him, I was trying to keep track of the positives.
Encouraging the coordination of the public and private procedures affecting land development.
You have to learn that.
You do, well, you know what happens? You end up using the same three or four, and you know those really, really well.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Visit the board?
Thank you, I really appreciate your comment, Amy. I was not available on the 28th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Opened to the public? Have a, motions open to the public? All in favor? Open to the public? Questions of this? What's that? Nope, no questions? Motion to close? Questions to close? All in favor?
Aye.
Close to public? Do you have more?
I do not have anyone else. I would like to make a quick, very, very quick closing, but I don't know, I don't think there's anybody that wants to make any comments from the public, but maybe if we could just check, I'd like to do a...
Yeah, I would like to have an opportunity for board comment.
Would you like me to sum up then, before?
Yeah, you can go ahead and sum up, then I think we'll have some comment discussion.
I really don't have anything else to add. My board professionals, or my applicant's professionals, I think gave you all the information you need to evaluate the project, hopefully look at it favorably, and to grant the relief requested. The only thing I will say is, the applicant has been involved in this every single step of the way, probably more so than most applicants I've ever dealt with. He's very hands-on, he runs a fabulous business, he made sure that he was in touch with every single professional, had a lot of input, and I can assure you that you would welcome him into this township, him and his business, and he would work with you going forward if there were any problems. He takes what he does very, very seriously, so I would just submit he would be a very good addition to your township, and I ask you favorably on the application.
Thank you very much for your time and your indulgence tonight. Want to start? Do you have any comments and questions?
I have a lot of comments and questions, but I don't know if I want to start. Are we going to get through our discussion tonight? What's our plan here?
It's 10:30. We could adjourn and then take a vote on 1:28, or we could get through our discussion and take a vote. I think that's kind of where we are at this point.
I would like some things clarified, like, for example, where the JPNL thing is, so we know where that sign can go. I mean, we don't need to wait for that, I guess, but I would like to see that and know that. Are there other questions that we want to have clarified before we? And I'm tired.
Yeah, it's always at 10:30 at night, this is the challenge, right?
I have a question. We heard a lot of testimony tonight about this being primarily a farm machinery business. The advertising of this business is very different than that. And I feel like we've heard a very convincing story about farm machinery, but I'm concerned that this business is more than a farm machinery business, and I don't know to what extent that affects the way we think about this.
Well, I know, yeah, there is farm machinery, but there is a lot of like off-road, those little...
Right, motorcycles.
Yeah, motorcycles and stuff like that there, but I don't, yeah, that's true. I think you said there's like a 70% farm use type of vehicles, something like that, which is good too. But, yeah, there are those little UTVs and stuff like that that are there too, that are speaking to sitter too, but...
We're losing farmland, and if we're losing farmland in service of farmers by having someplace where people who live in the community can buy what they need, the machines they need, I can...
Well, let's discuss that, that area, I know, I've seen corn every once in a while, I don't know what it's for, you know, what it's for, but it's not a consistent farm area. So I don't know how much... So I don't know how much you could really say that we're losing farm area there quite, you know, in my opinion, I drive by there all the time. So that's a tough one, right, that's a tough question. I agree with you there.
Yeah, I'm quite concerned about sort of the... I don't think, I don't feel like this is an agriculture-oriented business. I look at, just the logo alone tells me a lot, having, you know, and first of all, I have to say, I do think this applicant has been responsible and has gone out of his way to put together a good presentation. I don't want to say that and that I don't think that, and he's, you know, thought through a lot with the, you know, with the design. But I'm, I, the desirable visual environment, we talk so much about keeping East Amwell rural, keeping the feeling of a rural environment. I look, think about this, and I compare that to Sweet Valley. I think about Sweet Valley where the building is oriented a different way, and, you know, I just kind of think, what's rural mean to me? I'm also concerned that, you know, a good part of the reason that this building needs to be so high is because we have three stories of dense storage space. That, to me, is just not consistent with farm, with farming. I'm very concerned, you know, we've put a lot of work into making sure we didn't get, we didn't end up with warehousing in this township, and I, I'm concerned, I cannot, with the information that I have now, I cannot imagine the front being a desirable visual, you know, I just, I don't see it. And we've heard sort of back and forth testimony about putting the product inside versus putting the product outside. I think that makes a difference to me. This, you know, this, is this gonna, is this kind of like tractor supply with a much nicer building? You know, is that where we're, you know, I'm really, I'm struggling to see this as being in character. And specifically, as I, you know, I started listening to the positives. And then the detriment to the public good, I am concerned about neighbors who have a farm that they look at and trees, despite the fact that they're here, that that's, people move into this area for that. Those are, I'm just, I'm really struggling with it, too. I haven't got, I haven't heard what I need to hear yet to get me... And then the sign, a very tall, that's, a lit sign like that is a concern of mine, too. I don't, it's just a huge lit sign, just I can't, I can't get my head around it. I...
When we talk about that lit sign, the only reason I don't have a problem with it is because right next door is a gas station, and they have all the signs out all over the place, and those signs are lights around 24 hours a day, and that's just up on the corner. So for me, I don't see that as a problem, because I see, I know there's lighting up there, and it's another business right up there. And as you move out into that, further out, I mean, it's like right next door. I don't think that sign there is going to be any worse or better than what you're seeing at the gas station on the corner right before there. That's just for a visual, you know what I mean?
This is where I'm genuinely struggling with this.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, the other place I struggle is still where the trials are going to happen, if people take it off, and how much noise that might generate with some of this equipment. I'm still not clear exactly where people are going to do trial runs of this, and it sounds like that happens relatively frequently.
I have, I want to add something. The location is really by the very noisy highway.
Yeah.
I go on this highway, and I go open to the Sweet Valley, and I run for my life sometimes because I don't know what's coming at me, the trucks.
Yes.
So thank God for the lane, you know, I usually try to go on the very right, along the right side, because then I take off and I go to a library or downtown Ringo's. But I think it's, I agree that it's a very good location for this business along the highway. And that highway is very noisy. I don't think you're going to hear any noise for someone to take for five or 10 or 15 minutes, you know, for a test. I just, I'm new, pretty new to this town, but definitely it's not my favorite, you know, location to go on that segment of Route 231. But I go, and I, like I said, this is, this is a good location for the business. I'm very, when I looked at first time this design, it's wonderful. This building looks beautiful.
It is nicely designed.
And I could see a lot of work and a lot of thoughts and power was put into it. And, yeah, we have tractor supply, you know, the tractor, we have many...
That is not in East Amwell.
No, no, but I'm saying...
By the way, neither is Quick Check. We do not get all that revenue.
Maybe we need it. The business will now be more attractive to adjacent towns and farmers. Maybe that increase of 70 could be be 80%. I don't know, I don't know. I rely on, you know, applicants who truthfully, you know, testify that this is 70%. And it's, would you say it's increased recently, or you see tendency that's increasing for the farmers and the people who like to buy their farm equipment?
My business has been increasing here over here towards equipment, which is why I've shifted to that. My, the logo is, going back to what you said, that was my beginnings. That's how I learned this industry of small engines and stuff like that. And when COVID hit, and I ran out of machines to sell and stuff like that, I had to figure it out. So I, that's when my errands and gravely rep walked in my door and said, hey, do you want to sell lawnmowers? Once I got that, I realized that was the moment, you know, I need to go towards equipment and that kind of stuff, and get away from the stuff that people don't need. So that's why I'm shifting towards equipment and definitely downplaying the dirt bikes and other stuff, because there's not as much money in it, and I need to survive and provide for my family. So I'm going towards equipment.
This is just my, this is how I see it. This is why we're having a conversation. It's, I do struggle with the large backlit sign being just consistent, gas stations, existing gas stations there, I think about what we're trying to preserve, and... And with the Jersey Powersports, it's just, it's, you know...
It looks more East Amwell than if you keep going down 202, past Tractor Supply. The buildings that are at a similar scale are the car dealerships.
Well, that's, and that's what I'm saying, that's what we don't want to be.
But if you're selling a side-by-side or a Kubota or a Bobcat, you need similar space. I mean...
I guess I'm looking for some assurance that this is going to remain a place that sells Bobcats and Kubotas and doesn't suddenly become a place where, you know, motocross teams come on Saturdays to meet, same way bike shop and track bike clubs. And, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, because businesses change. I own a business, and, you know, people I served 20, 10 years ago aren't the people I serve today. And this can be, you know, you mentioned that your business changed after COVID, and I'm trying to understand what this, you know, once this business is approved, it's approved, and the use, the customer base may change. And I want to think about this for the long-term impact on the residents, and so...
Yes, so what do we approve, if we approve this, right, and then 10 years from now, 20 years from now, the property sells? We've already, it's an approved what? What's it approved for? Is it approved for a sports dealership? Is it approved for a vehicle dealership? What is it approved for?
Pretty much everything he's requested, you know? So it's the farm equipment, it's the lawn tractors, it's the dirt bikes, it's the, you know, other stuff he's listed in there. I mean, that's all, that's what the variance is the request for, so... I don't know that, you know, means that, asking for a variance, I don't know that you could say, oh, well, you can, you have to sell 70%, you know?
This is, and this is what I'm saying, like, you know, you have to change your, you have to change your business logo when you, because, you know, you have to sell only, only track. It just, I'm really struggling with that. I will say that the new location, I would think, would further the continuation towards that end. I mean, if it was going, you know, more towards a different type of area, then maybe the business would lend itself to change. But the more rural of an area you're coming out to expand, again, maybe it's just maybe thinking logically, but the more those are going to be the types of people you're going to attract, and you're going to be selling that type of equipment. But I understand the concern. Yeah, I, it's like I... I just don't think it lends itself to that. I don't think you're going to get a lot of people coming out here, I don't think you're going to get bikers out here hanging in the parking lot. I'm sitting here saying, thinking to myself, are there conditions I can ask for that are going to get me there? And I'm not, I don't want to start going down that path unless I'm sure of that, right? I guess, I don't know how I'm feeling, how I'm leaning.
Well, let me ask a question.
Yeah.
So the thing that you're struggling with is, I guess, when you ask the question, what can I, what conditions or mitigation can we put on this? What is it about what you have heard and seen that makes you think this is something other than 70% farm equipment?
I'll start with the logo.
Okay.
I mean, just in the marketing background, so that's part of why, that tells me a whole lot.
Gotcha.
So I'm just being, you asked me the question.
Yeah, no, I think this is helpful for the applicant to hear.
Yeah, that's part of it. The idea of equipment, I feel like this is just sort of shoehorned, it's very tight space, putting a lot in there, right? So you've got people coming in, you know, 18-wheelers coming in and dropping off things. You've got people taking vehicles out for, or maybe on the property for test drives.
So before you go on, so would a clearly identified area for display, one thing, and use of a track, or lack of a better word, a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Test drive.
Test drive area on a plan, help you with that?
How do you, people don't ever take them off property? You know, the worst thing that could ever happen is they, you know, be driving, taking them for test drives in Ringo's.
Oh, yeah, no, no, for sure. It sounds like, it sounds like everything has to happen on the property, it's not like you can give...
Or even strays off into Sweet Valley territory.
Right, so, so what that does is if you can contain that on a site plan as a condition, if they go off of, if they violate that, there are violations that can be had. You're not in compliance with your site plan. So that's what I'm thinking. When you're saying what kind of conditions can you place on those things that you're most concerned with? I don't, the logo is just a suggestion.
Yeah.
But I think display area, yeah, I think the thing that starts to get messy or maybe feels cumbersome is where does this display area occur? How much is in that display area?
Yeah, I see this swale with a slope, and then we're already asking to reduce that, and it's just, that's not...
It feels like it's too much, I guess, maybe?
Feels like too much and too little space.
And then what, what happens in the test drive? Well, how does that look? What does that feel like? And so I, so if you start to kind of talk about those conditions or those things, you just mentioned three, is there other, are there others?
What happens when it's sold? What can, who can come in next? I mean, I can, I can think of nightmares in adjacent towns that I won't go, won't go into, but it's just...
So you, if you approve this, this use variance is specific to this piece of property as it relates to this resolution, as it relates to the business that is being proposed, the entity that's being proposed?
But it moves with the property.
Moves with, so, so if somebody comes in and wants to change that in any shape or form, they're coming in for a new...
amended.
amended site plan or a new site plan, and potentially, whether they're permitted or not, they have to come before this board for additional approvals?
That's what I was thinking, because by virtue of you granting your use variance, you're doing it based upon the representations that have been made to this board, which may be different when a new user comes in.
Yeah, we don't want a car dealership there, we don't want a motorcycle shop there, we don't want, you know, those kinds of things, we want to protect against it morphing into... And Jersey Powersports, to tell you the truth, just sort of lends that image.
Understood, and you've heard the testimony as to why.
Yeah.
How it got there, and it's unfortunate, but I think that's definitely the case. And when I was just speaking with him, he did indicate that over the past at least two years, the only thing that's been growing is the farm equipment, which again lends to the moving out into this area, because that's where the sales are. So, I mean, if we, if there was a condition that could be crafted such that, you know, again, we all know that the, just the language of the, you're granting the, whatever you're granting based upon the representations, based upon, you know, the findings that because of the project and the representations, the requirements, the criteria being met, any change in that that might be necessitated by a new tenant or owner would have to come back to the board to show that those proofs remain proven. One word, but something...
Some officer would have to approve any change of use, correct? If the property were sold in the case of for...
Change of use, what's a change of use is debatable? Seen it myself.
Right.
There's, I won't say it.
Understood. I will say that the website concerns me, and the website's not on, you know, the website's not under consideration here, but we were told a story about farm, primarily farm equipment and tractors, and I see farm, lawn, snow, and tractor equipment as one of six things that are all kind of given equal weight here. All the apparel sold here is motorcycle gear. And so that's, that's why I raised the question, to your point about the logo, about what the primary business, now, look, I hear the testimony, and I believe the testimony, that primarily this is farm equipment right now. But it does raise a question, such that when somebody says, hey, you know, we're a Kawasaki dealership, we want to buy this, if this guy's been selling motorcycles for years, then this becomes a Kawasaki dealership, to your point.
That's my big, yeah, and then we're done.
That's appropriate use, and then...
Yeah, and that's the same use, same, very similar branding now that you mention it.
Yeah.
There is the problem for me. It's, it's... Yeah.
And one of the points about stacking was stacking equipment at the height was needed to stack equipment. You're not stacking tractors. Lawnmowers, okay, yeah.
Now you can take a vote if you're done discussing. Probably done, is there, anyone else want to add anything?
I just think it's really difficult to take a look into the future and add on what's going on in the future as compared to what's going on now. And I agree with you, it's a...
You know, if we put a condition on that, if the property is sold, it has to still conform to the rural type. No?
I'm just saying, I shouldn't be shaking my head. I just don't, I'm trying to imagine how you craft it, that's all, I'm sorry. I, I'm...
Well, we have a wonderful...
But I'm trying to figure out in my brain how I would craft it as well, and, you know, I, I feel like, I mean, would the applicants agree to a condition that it has to be 70% agricultural equipment? And that's the, and, you know, just what you testified?
I don't even think it has to be, as long as it is, it goes along with our master plan and what we have defined as appropriate business.
Yeah. I mean, your master plan, from what I could see, says that the most recent, you know, rendition of this says that you're trying to encourage land uses along Route 202 that support the township's farming community and provides additional amenities for residents and visitors. I mean, that's what your master plan is one of the things in 2022.
What does the land use element say?
And you're suppo, the highway and office district says it's recommended that it be a... that it be, um, amended to broaden the permitted uses and that, um, that while the district permits office and medical, the plan recommends the township focus future economic development opportunities in the zone, activities that will support the local farming community. That's what it says.
And none of that's been put into a land use element that I know of, none of that's, you know, I mean, that's sort of a.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Just something to think about? Um, the testimony's been that they don't wanna store anything outside, they wanna keep it all inside, but they do wanna showcase some things outside. If the condition is only agricultural type equipment can be showcased outside. If a condition can be, to your point, no motorcycle group gatherings in the parking lot, like, to take the pieces of what you're concerned with and put them in there as condition. So, you're not showcasing motorcycles outside, you're only showcasing agricultural, which is what will continue to bring that in, um, you know, in case somebody decides they do wanna start coming in the parking lot, well, you know what? That's not allowed, so you guys gotta keep moving, because we can't have that violation. And there may be a number of them, but maybe dealing with each one that way is the way to effectively get to where you wanna go in a way that can be enforced, because I think that's the other issue, too, because to the point of 70%, I mean, you want P&Ls every month or every year?
No.
I mean, that's, that's not gonna work.
No.
Um, but to the point of effectively getting there, if you're only, you know, showcasing red shirts, you're only gonna sell red shirts, you know, and that's kinda where I'm thinking.
And has to be farm, majority farm equipment? Can we at least say that? Can we, so that the Kawasaki dealer can't come in? I mean, I, I, I'm, I don't.
Well, it's another thing, these are all off-road vehicles, basically, right? So, I mean, Kawasaki dealership, that would, you're, you're talking about street motorcycles, and that's a completely different ballpark there, it's a different dealership completely.
So, none of these are street legal?
I don't think so, are they?
No, there's a few loopholes to get something street legal, but you're not having groups of people riding in or anything like that. I mean, they would have to take it home, get it plated, and do it all kinda on their own. It's not something that we would be, you know, having hordes of people.
Okay, 'cause your, your notice does request that, um, you're going to sell vehicles such as ATVs, electric dirt bikes, electric vehicles, equipment, go-karts, lawn, snow, tractor, motorcycles, is listed on here, UTVs and amphibious vehicles and trailers.
Yes, we do have to say that because of the way motorcycles, motorcycles is designated on dirt bikes, so there's an Enduro dirt bike versus a regular dirt bike. One of our brands has Enduros, which is the only street legal version of that. Um, so we have to be able to have a motor vehicle license to sell those vehicles, so that is why there's that.
I can't do it.
I sold four last year.
You sold four of those last year? It's, I actually, it's not even just this applicant. Okay. Yeah, I'm being.
No, I get it. I, I, I understand. Again, I, I think, and with all due respect, I understand what your concerns are, um, I would hate to get caught up in the minutia of something that might not happen, that we might be able to condition around, that's what I'm trying to get to, because I, I, I think that's kinda where we all wanna go.
I think you're.
You know, you're concerned about the future, but you wanna have something tangible to be able to enforce if that does happen down the road.
I think the applicant probably needs to suggest some conditions to the board and see if they're acceptable, because, um, I can't, I mean, I'm, I'm like betting against myself, you know? I mean, I just mentioned the motorcycles, and he just said he has to have that, you know? So, I, I'm not in this business, I can't really advise the board about what, you know, what would be a good condition that they could live with. But you've heard, you know, they basically are looking for an ag, ag support, you know, farm equipment type of business here, right?
That's, that's what we're looking for.
And that's what they would wanna say.
With the aesthetics that go with it, which I don't.
Right, off-road vehicles.
Backlit, and off-road vehicles.
Off-road vehicles, yeah.
You do where you.
Well, off-road vehicles are, are going to work, because they're not, you know, I mean, that's primarily what we're talking about here, and yes, you have some trailers that have to go along with that, that's fine.
So, you're okay with off-road?
But off-road vehicles are, that are off-road vehicles is, that's kind of leading us in the right direction.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you also don't wanna end up with an ATV dealer, that's all they're doing.
Right, yeah.
Right? So, this is, this is where my, this is where my, my challenge is, and I, I.
I'll need to like it.
I think at this point.
Yeah.
We can either take the mother or they can.
Yeah, I'd rather they can come back and go.
But I think we need to come back.
Yeah.
What if we go back, put our thinking caps on? I have a list of what some of your concerns are, and try and put those into some conditions to get over. I'll get it over to Sharon, she can circulate it, and, uh.
So, basically, we would adjourn to the next meeting, perhaps?
I mean, how does that, how does that sound?
Can you do that or we can take a vote? I mean, at this point, yeah.
No, I'd rather hear the.
I, I am concerned that you'll go back and go through all these gyrations, and we won't get there, but I, if that's, you know, I think it's, it's, that's your.
I mean, I certainly don't want that to happen either.
I know.
But if I'm faced with a denial versus that, I'll take the other option.
Well.
I, I don't know how the board would vote at this point, I, I actually don't.
I, I would like to vote for something that had some of these concerns met, and that said, it sounds like you're willing to make all the concessions that the board professionals asked for, um, and it doesn't sound like we're ready to do that, because nobody knows what we're voting for, if we're voting for it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with what you just said.
Yeah, yeah.
I do wanna say, too, that, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Dunkirk Church Road where I live, um, that is probably the last sweet spot, in a sense, in the surrounding area of nothing. Um, I moved there because I don't like hustle and bustle, I don't like lights. I'm moving away from Flemington because I've already been broken into, uh, twice now, and been vandalized in the back, uh, another time.
At the store.
At the store, yes. They ripped open my door, I mean, it's been a mess, and I am trying to get away from there. I've, this is, I've lived in Ringos my, almost my entire life, um, this area's been my whole life, and I'm not gonna come into a town and wanna destroy my own town when I'm moving away from the apartments and everything else. I don't like that area, so it would be counterintuitive to me, too, to move into my own town and make this whole thing happen where you guys don't want it either. So, my goal is to work with you guys and just provide for my family and have a business in my town, that's essentially my goal.
Appreciate that.
I just wanted you guys to know that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you also give some thought, do we need this sign to be backlight? If we're going down this path, I'm just.
I have that on this list.
It's really.
Can I say something about backlighting, though? I mean, backlighting is leaving a very central light on the inside. It's not like it's.
I'm more concerned about the commercial look.
I'll say this, if this sign is an issue, I do not care if it has a light.
I didn't think you would.
I knew that answer.
You end up with bootleg lighting on the end, but a pin lighting from the outside.
I, you know.
We'll work on the sign.
We can look at what the aesthetic, you know, you see where I'm going.
I wanna work with you guys, I do.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I'm trying to be upfront with you that.
You are, and, and greatly appreciate it, you're, this board has always been very upfront, and we appreciate it.
So, we will, um, adjourn on this application until, do you wanna come back? Have a week, or I'm gonna give you the option, January 28th, February, oh, yeah, we have another application on the 18th that may or may not be here, but I also wanna give you enough time. I just need, I need to, we have to go to a dirt, a date certain.
Is Monahan's on by on the 18th?
Yes.
And if you come in.
Yes. Because you're here. If we could do the 18th, just to give us enough time, um, does that work? So, we have another application, um, I don't expect testimony.
We won't be, we won't be long on this one.
You could do this one first.
Yeah.
That's, because you can't do Monahan, can't have them wait for Monahan.
I don't wanna do that, that's exactly why I'm sitting here thinking about this.
I mean, I think this isn't, it won't take us long to vote.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what I'm thinking, if we have the time, I think that the legwork can be done to at least know that everything looks good, but this one we need to talk about, or, you know, none of them work, or they all work, or whatever the case may be, as opposed to trying to rush it for a week.
The, I mean, could the conditions come to us on, like, on, on Monday, so we've got a chance to look at it before the vote?
I'd like to try and do it way before then.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Really, the, if we're gonna consider things according to the board's bylaws, it's supposed to be in 10 days before the meeting, you know? So, to me, that would be fair, if you can do that.
Yep.
Are we looking for any other exhibits to be presented at this point, outdoor display area, or this?
Actually, that, yes, seeing a rendering with the outdoor display, with the signage, with the, you know.
The JC P&L.
The whole, the real-life look.
Okay, so you do wanna see all that?
I do wanna, thank you, it was a good idea. I know. But I, we need to do this, we need to do this right.
So, we're talking February 18th?
Yes, I think you're already gonna be here.
So, basically, this will be a continuation to February 18th, correct?
Yes, so with that, okay. We got one. Yeah. Okay, so with that, um, we will continue this application to February 18th, 2025.
And with that, um, our, we currently have a continuance on file until February 28th.
Oh, so we need more time to act.
Maybe we can get another month to act as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um, okay, I'm gonna move on from this?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we already, actually, we're pretty much done, all we forced, we went, we put those ahead, um, we have a motion to open to the public.
Somebody would have moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open to the public for items, anything, actually. Francis isn't here.
We gotta check it.
Okay, without objection, we close to the public. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move re-adjourn.
I think, anyone a guest? We are adjourned.
Thank you again for your time, and I know it's late. Stay warm.
It's so weird.